Good morning. We have Mr. Bill Webb and Wayne Darrell here to give us an update on the COVID-19. Your's yours.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address both you and the community. I want to take this opportunity to praise our partners in the Emergency Operations Center and all of our extended community partners. They have, this is currently day 69 of the state of emergency. It is one of the longest lasting states of emergency that I can remember, and certainly it has required a significant effort from all of the participants and all of the members of our community. Last Thursday, Maryland started a new chapter in the COVID-19 crisis. The process of reopening our state and its economy has begun. Reopening will be significantly more complicated than the shutdown process. We will be emerging into a new state of normal where social distancing, face masks, and hand sanitizer will persist as artifacts of our society for the foreseeable future. The SARS-CoV-2 virus remains embedded in our community. I warn all citizens that reopening does not mean that COVID-19 is behind us. I encourage all not to become complacent with the practices that we, that have kept us safe. Reopening and the new normal will require us to reexamine many facets of our community that we take for granted. Over the next several months, as a community, we will need to figure out how to balance normalcy with the risks of an ongoing pandemic. Our efforts will focus on workplaces, schools, recreational activities, commercial venues, just to name a few. This is an enormous task that the Health Department cannot do alone. I urge all citizens to examine their daily routines from the lens of infection prevention. Overcoming COVID-19 will require everyone's effort. Personal responsibility will have the greatest impact on the course of this pandemic. As reopening progresses, I anticipate our infection numbers to climb. With increasing social interactions, the virus will find new hosts and avenues for spread. How high and how fast this will occur is not yet known. Bottles from previous pandemics indicate that there will be several peaks in the future, but we don't know when or how long they will last. At this point, I'd like to, to structure, you know, my presentation very similarly to the last time I was here, two weeks ago. I want to talk about some of our current numbers, our current outbreaks, the four pillars of recovery, and some of the CARES Act funding the Health Department has received. Currently, you know, here are the numbers as of, and these numbers are as of, as of yesterday, May 11, 2020. The number of Kent County cases we have is 116. The number of deaths that we have are 13. Our per capita infection rate, that's the, the number of infections per 100,000, is 505.4. Overall, the state rate is approximately 504. So we're right, right in line with the current, current infection rate. But if you look at our, our infection rate compared to other jurisdictions, we're the fourth highest rate in the state. To date, we have tested 660 people. That is a, a testing rate of 3.4% of our population has been tested. 3.4% of our population is, in comparison to the other counties in the state, we are the second highest tested population, you know, per capita population in the state, which is good news. Of those who were tested, about 17.6% of those tested end up being positive, and that compares with the statewide rate of about 20.3%. So, you know, our positivity rate is a little bit lower than elsewhere, you know, in a, on a statewide, statewide scale. The total number of businesses that the Health Department has consulted related to safe practices, we have gone out and evaluated 86, made 86 separate business calls. Now on to the, now I want to just move on to our outbreaks. You know, our outbreaks are, are specific to, you know, a, a single location or business, and we have had, we've had multiple outbreaks in the county. Most of them I covered last week, but I'll go ahead and, and, you know, give an update now. We have, we have outbreaks in, in two of our nursing homes currently, and one is Autumn Lake and the other is the resorts at Chester River. And before, you know, before you jump to conclusions about nursing homes, please understand that 151 out of the state's 200 total facilities have outbreaks currently. That's 68% of our skilled nursing facilities in the state have outbreaks. At, you know, at Autumn Lake, we have 68 total positive cases. 55 of those were residents, 13 are employees. We have had 17 deaths there, and as of yesterday, 42 of the 68 cases have resolved at Autumn Lake. The resorts at Chester River, we currently have 23 total, total positive cases, 20 are residents, three are employees. We have had five deaths there. We have five additional individuals who are pending test results, and as of yesterday, we do not have any cases that have been resolved there.
Bill, could I, could I ask, when you were talking about Autumn Lake's numbers, and you said four, I think you said 40-some of them, did, is, is that patients that have recovered from it?
Correct. Though that's, that's individual, 42, and this includes residents and employees. So 42 of the cases have, have, you know, recovered, which means that they are no longer symptomatic and have, they have tested positive, they have gone the 13 days without either developing symptoms or have overcome their symptoms.
We have lost no employees at these nursing homes?
No, no.
And why do you think the nursing homes are so, is it because, obvious, for, I guess for obvious reasons, but they're, 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 I mean, it's the, obviously, there's a, some obvious reasons why they're susceptible to this, but I guess it's carried in and that?
That really, there's, there's, you know, the obvious reasons are that, that these individuals are, are more fragile than the general population, and, and also, we know that this particular virus impacts older individuals much more significantly than, than, you know, younger folks. And, and, you know, compared to other viruses that, you know, say, you know, affect children more, this, you know, as a whole, impacts, you know, those over 60 more significantly than, than those who are, who are younger than that age. They're much more likely to develop severe symptoms versus, you know, the, the regular adult population that can get sick and recover.
But that is a good sign when you hear 40-some of those individuals who were also fragile, but they did recover from it.
They did recover, and that's, you know, you know, as horrendous as, as those numbers sound, you know, the staff at both of these facilities have been, you know, working around the clock, very diligently providing, you know, care, you know, heroic level, levels of care.
Absolutely.
You know, it is not easy to, you know, to convince staff to go into, you know, infectious zone like that and, you know, to provide care for, you know, for these individuals because it's, you know, it's personally very scary and, you know, something that many of our healthcare workers have not faced, you know, previously on such a wide scale level.
The rest of us are trying to stay away from everything. Those people are running into it.
Correct.
Bill, can you speak to, a little bit, it gets confusing sometimes, I think, why the death, number of deaths are different than here in what a report on the county website?
Okay, certainly. So when we look at, you know, I break, we break out the county numbers from the outbreak numbers because when we look at, at outbreaks, they're geographically independent. That means that the numbers don't, you know, aren't tied to where you live. The county numbers are tied to where you live. So, so, you know, and I've gotten several questions about, okay, why do the death numbers not match up? Because we have residents in our nursing homes who, who are there, but they live, say, in Queen Anne's County, or they live in, you know, in Cecil County. They're, they're here because this is where the facility is, and that's the medical need that they have. And when, you know, when they expire and the, their location of residence is put on the death certificate, that is, you know, it's put, you know, it can be registered in Queen Anne's County, and that, that gets registered to, to Queen Anne's County as a death versus some, and we've even had individuals who have been longtime residents of the nursing homes, you know, two, three years who've been in the nursing homes, and, you know, it gets attributed to another county.
That makes no sense whatsoever to me.
That's, and, and that's a, that's a decision by the Vital Statistics Administration that the health officers have, have, you know, have tried to change.
Whoever wants to take the time to argue that fact doesn't have much to do because that, if you die in Kent County, it seems like to me, that's a death in Kent County. I don't care where you, there's a lot of people that live in Kent County that weren't born here, for Lord's sakes, but that, that's, that's crazy. No wonder you have trouble keeping up with the statistics.
Well, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of different systems that we have to keep, you know, keep track of, but, but that's, we get a lot of questions about it, and people are confused.
Oh, I've got, I've fielded a few of those questions. People don't understand how come the numbers don't match up sometimes, and when you're sitting there arguing about who gets, what county gets credit for the death because they lived one place and died another place in a nursing home, I, that's just ridiculous. No wonder it's so complicated.
Okay. So, the one other outbreak that, that we had was at an egg farm, you know, in the northeastern part of our county. It involved 13 employees. We had no deaths related to that outbreak, and all 13 of those cases have resolved. The other thing I wanted to mention related to the agricultural and processing businesses that we have in, in our state, the Health, the Kent County Health Department partnered with the Cecil County Health Department and Union Hospital to provide a community testing event last Thursday and Friday. We were able to test 320 individuals who were, you know, and we opened it up to everybody in the community that wanted to be tested. You know, we, if you didn't need to have a doctor's note, you didn't need to have symptoms. If you wanted to get tested, we opened that up, and we were targeting specifically our, you know, our agricultural workers who, who work in, you know, work in the egg farms and our nurseries and who are, you know, ramping up their operations as the spring season advances.
Kent County would not have too bad a number if it, if you took the nursing homes out of it.
Correct.
I mean, that's really what's driven our numbers up. I mean, I, you know, they're part of Kent County, and I understand that, but the general population, I think that's how people become, you know, you have some people that think maybe the restrictions are too tight and we're going too far with this thing. And I guess it's easy to kind of become complacent with that because of the, when they look at the general population isn't being affected. I mean, we would have 40 or 50 cases in all of Kent County if, if we eliminated them, but...
About, about 75 to 80% of our, of our cases are attributable to these outbreaks. And, and, you know, that's, you know, that's, the, our nursing homes and skilled nursing facility and our agriculture, these are all parts of the landscape of Kent County. We can't really separate that.
Oh, no, I don't, for sure.
And, you know, I'm not happy that, that we've had as many cases as, as we have, but, but this virus is, is, you know, is, is very tricky and it's very infectious. And, you know, our nursing homes have been working for two and a half months now, solidly keeping visitors out, using infection control practices, knowing that that was out there, and it still happened anyway. And that's a, you know, that's a, you know, that's the way, you know, and that's happening all across the state.
Mr. Webb, just a question. With the egg farm, you say the 13, they were Kent County residents?
Well, no, they, there were 13 cases, and they were, they were spread in, in several jurisdictions of those 13.
Oh, okay, so they were not all Kent County?
They were not all Kent County.
Okay. But that was out of 320 that you tested?
That was, that, no, that was, the 310, 20 that had been tested, only 10 came back positive, and, and four, and those were specifically Kent County residents.
Okay.
But the, you know, the, the egg farm, we had 13 cases there, and they've all been resolved.
Now, is the egg farm located in Kent County or Cecil County?
Well, the, the one we're specifically looking at is in Kent County. It's between Millington and Massey, and they have two other sister facilities of approximately the same size in, in Warwick and Cecilton.
Do we know if those were affected?
How, you know, that's why we did the, the community testing. And as, as far as what, what I have heard, I, you know, the, I have not heard specifically about the two other egg processing facilities, but the positivity rate out of the testing event that we did was significantly higher than, than, you know, other community testing efforts, specifically the one at Purdue Stadium and Salisbury. So, so, you know, I'm guessing that they do have some positives there, and we're working with the, the state's poultry task force to help, you know, help mitigate this and look specifically at the food safety and the infection control practices that they have in place, both at all three facilities.
Well, is that, is that the one there at Sasser's?
I think so.
Right, right past where you turn on to 301. It's right past that, which would make it between Sasser's and Massey. I'm, I'm just trying to picture. I can't picture one between Millington and Massey.
I remember the street name, the road name, but I can't remember it.
But it's right there next to 301. Is that right?
Yes, as far as I'm...
You would go past the cutoff to go on to 301, and it's on your right?
It's on your right.
I got you.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
How many employees do they have there for, for that many people to?
So, at, at the, at the egg farm, they have approximately 30 per farm.
Okay.
And they, they do move, there is some movement between, between facilities. The other, you know, the other issue in southern Cecil County is there's, there's a mushroom farm that is also one of the, they have 300 employees at, at the mushroom farm in Warwick, and, you know, our testing event was, was, you know, we were also targeting that population because it's the same, same type of agricultural labor who is working, you know, working all of those facilities.
The way we're all interconnected is that I get all my egg crates from Chicken Farm in Warwick because I ship my parts in egg crates individually so they're not damaged or scratched. So, I'm always at egg crates, and I have not wanted to, because, I mean, I'm the one and only who is to pick them up, and then I want to expose it myself and then bring it back here, but that's how we're all interconnected. You don't know who's going where.
Well, there are strategies that you can use to get those things and, you know, disinfect those if, you know, we can, we can help you with that.
Well, I was sitting there thinking about it, but I'm like, well, I'll stay away. I got, I'm good for another six or seven weeks, so hopefully things will clear up in six or seven weeks. But that's how we're all interconnected. They just don't know.
Yeah.
But there's more interconnection between those communities than I think you have with the rest of us. I mean, it's just, it's their lifestyle, their, their community.
Well, you know, I think that, that, what we have found, especially with the, you know, this, at the, the agricultural labor workforce that we have, you know, stretches up and down the eastern shore. They're a vital link to, you know, the businesses that we have here, and, you know, they, you know, it is, you know, it is a community. And, and, you know, when, when we've done the testing, we have found individuals, you know, in Delaware, in Caroline County, in Queen Anne's County, in Cecil County. And, you know, they're, they're, they're doing important work here, and, you know, we want to make sure that, that they stay safe and healthy just like the rest of our county.
Right. I believe that, was it the governor or the feds that put a task force on our chicken processing farm?
It was, it was the, the governor.
The governor has a task force.
And we have, the, the task force has moved in federal resources, specifically FEMA and the Centers of Disease Control.
And I think they're concerned, like, those communities are concerned about it also.
Absolutely.
You know, this all being so new, it's so hard to think of what's going to be affected, what, what can be proactive with it. You really just don't know always until it happens.
Part of the task force that we're working, Bill has the health side, and emergency management working the ancillary sides of transportation and residents. Sometimes, if we have a positive and they have to go home to a home that's, a high, high, high amount of people living in a home together, maybe we wouldn't get that person out before they infect the rest of them. So we're, Ginger's found a couple places where we can, we can house people if they're willing to come and, and be separated during their isolation. So there's different perspectives of this that we have to work together, that the task force is working on all of, from, from, from eastern shore Virginia all the way up to Cecil County.
And, you know, I will say that our, our local management board and our religious institutions have been instrumental in reaching out to that community. You know, we couldn't have gotten the turnout that we did without their assistance. So, so, you know, this is a community that has, you know, some suspicions about government operations, and, you know, we're trying to overcome, overcome those barriers and help them, you know, be, you know, be productive and to be happy and to work, you know, to be part of our community. Okay. I have a few more things I want to talk about, sort of, our, our, these are the pillars of, of recovery. Our people, our personal protective equipment. At this point, the Kent, Kent County agencies, we still continue to face a shortage of masks, gowns, and face shields, and hand sanitizer. Of these, gowns are in the shortest supply. The gowns are, these are disposable things that you put on for healthcare workers to help protect, you know, the virus landing on, on their clothing. Our emergency, I'm happy to report that our emergency supply chain for PPE has improved in the last two weeks. We have gotten, we have gotten several shipments, and we're, we're, you know, at this point, we have a supply to work with our healthcare partners, you know, in the short term. The bad news is our commercial supply chain is still significantly delayed, and we have found that pricing levels are higher than at the start of the crisis. So, you know, that's a supply and demand, you know, issue, and, you know, as time goes on, I'm confident that that will resolve itself. All of our healthcare partners are still aggressively using PPE conservation practices that would have, would not have been encouraged before the crisis. So, you know, reusing masks, reusing face shields for, you know, usually that was not acceptable before the crisis. Because of the shortage, they're still doing that. For our testing, you know, our testing efforts, you know, we still, the Health Department, you know, we still face an ongoing shortage of getting testing supplies. We have been assisted greatly, and I mean greatly, by the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health, and also the testing, the regional testing site at Chesapeake College. You know, as our population testing numbers indicate, we could not have gotten to that level of testing without those partnerships. It's important to note that the University of Maryland has also implemented rapid testing for their patients for elective surgery, which, you know, was, you know, scheduled to start, you know, was permitted to start, I should say, last week. Our hospital surge capacity, there really are no changes at this point to report in the last two weeks related to, to their changes in surge planning. As far as I understand, they have been, the Chestertown facility has been operating within their normal capacity limits for the last two weeks. They do plan to resume elective surgical procedures, and when they do that, Shore is committed to closely monitor and schedule those procedures according to the, the current hospital capacity. Related to contact tracing, you know, the Health Department is in the process of hiring two to three additional local contact tracers. The Maryland statewide call center for contact tracing, employing 700 workers, will go live by the end of May, and this includes the development of a new statewide technology database for contact tracing. That's a, that's a significant effort on behalf of the Maryland Department of Health that they're moving rapidly to get, you know, to get, to get up and going. Locally, our contact tracing has revealed that, that the majority of cases in Kent County are attributable to occupational exposure or household transmission. So, so, you know, folks have picked it up at work, usually, you know, in an essential, essential business like a nursing home, or if someone is infected in their household, it's much more likely for another household member to get it. This trend likely will change as our community reopens. I do want to mention the CARES funding grant that the Health Department has received. The Health Department was awarded $3.3 billion from, from the United States Congress through the Corona Relief Fund. The Kent County Health Department has worked closely with the Commissioners and with, with Ms. Heller to, you know, to formulate a spending plan related to that. Half of that will go towards public health spending. That includes things such as personal protective equipment, testing, cleaning supplies, and overtime for first responders. The other, the second half of it is for non-public health spending, and that's going to include things such as technology solutions, as you're watching me today. You know, that's plexiglass barriers, absentee ballots, and food bank operations. This funding is intended to offset many of the costs of this crisis and help our towns and communities moving forward. We are grateful for our federal partners for this relief. In closing, reopening of the state will continue. Reopening will, will be just a small part of a long-term recovery process. Reopening is going to happen a lot faster than many want, yet it will also move much more slowly for those in the community who want to get back to work. You know, we encourage everybody to be patient, as they have been for the last two-plus months. I expect reopening to occur regionally, and there, there will be significant variability between jurisdictions. The key numbers to watch as, as reopening decisions are made by the governor is to look at the number of new cases and our hospitalization counts. At this time, we are living through a moment of history. The Kent County Health Department is committed to serving our citizens as we navigate this new chapter of the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have much for you, Commissioners, other than, you know, Bill does an excellent job always of outlining exactly what's going on. We did spend, not six or seven days in EMS, obstating our staff in response to the assisted living facilities and what they were going through. We could cut that back now. They did a really good job and worked with the Health Department, and they recovered. So we've cut back to pretty much regular staffing now. We are still operating three ambulances, north, south, and central, and that will continue through this, through the foreseeable future. And, and Bill, one of the last Bill's comments was, the Emergency Operations Center clearly has changed conversation in the last 10 days or so to reopening and recovery, what that's going to look like. Our, our MEMA calls we have every other day or so really stress that there will be some local decisions that can be made once the governor makes decisions on whether or not we follow that path or not. So with assistance, you'll have some of those decisions to make with assistance of Bill based on what's going on in our community. So you'll need to be ready for that and understand that, and, you know, we can talk about that as a group as time, as the time comes. So. Are you, you're hearing the same thing too, Bill, with your calls with the Health, Maryland Department?
Yeah, the reopening is, you know, we are on that, we are on that path, and I would expect, you know, expect the governor to be making some decisions, if not this week, then next week. You know, we're about the next, the next phase of, of things.
We're going to open up our EOC. We're going to ask, do we have some business input also? So we're working on who, the right person to do that, or people to do that, so we can add that perspective to what we're doing in New Orleans. That's all I have.
I'd just like to thank you both for doing, for keeping a surprise to what's going on, and certainly you're on top of things and your wealth of information, and I'm very welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. We're fortunate here in... We're fortunate here in Kent County to have two people, your bellies and all of your staff that has gone over and beyond to...
Just started this job not long ago, but you've been baptized under fire here, I tell you.
It has been, it has been quite an eventful 18 months, I think.
I'm sure. But you've handled it well, and we appreciate the job.
I can, you know, I'm quite fortunate in that Dr. Spencer is still involved with the Health Department, and he, you know, he is, you know, he led the Health Department for, you know, at least a dozen years, and he's been able to, you know, provide some mentorship and some guidance that I'm very grateful that he's still involved, and, you know, it has, it certainly has been a learning process for me.
Very good.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you very much.